Okay. Moving right along, if we open the meeting, do we have any individuals here for public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to new business. The annual town meeting warrant. Jessica, do you want to walk us through that?
Yes. So presented, I have the annual town meeting warrant. This is just a draft as we are still working out the details for the location. And there's also one article that needs some language change to it before we can publish it. So I will just have to ask the select board to approve the warrant tonight and then have to sign at a later date, sometime before the end of this week.
No. I never sign it without it being done.
No, that's why she's saying, you're not going to sign it tonight. We're going to sign it later in the week.
Right. We need to make sure we approve that. It's all right.
Yeah.
Right. So the first couple of articles are standard. So Article One is water enterprise. Article Two is sewer enterprise. Article Three is transferring ambulance receipts to fund part of the ambulance budget. Article Four will be the omnibus budget. Article Five will be the schools budget. Article Six is the peg access and cable fund, which funds, you know, these meetings being recorded. And educational government television, so the local channels that you guys get through cable. Article Seven is the typical revolving funds. Article, and then Article Eight, this is the one where I need to make sure that the language is okay. The police chief is requesting that he eliminates the K-9 cruiser account and transfer the existing funds into the Berry Falls Dam account, which is an account that was created to go towards the purchase of a cruiser. So he just wants to consolidate it into one account as pursuing a K-9 is not, thank you, is not one of his top priorities in this.
Wasn't it, we had a revolving account for the Berry Falls Dam for the police?
Yes.
When did that form?
Um, I don't know when it was formed. I can look into that.
Please, I didn't know we had such an account.
But the federal government pays our police department a detail rate to patrol the dam.
Right, they make a payment on it. We were trying to get them to pay more because they were paying a trivial amount that had been locked in for something like 25 years.
Okay.
But it shouldn't have been a separate account. There shouldn't be funds that come into our coffers that we put into the police budget. But I wasn't aware we had any separate account for that.
Okay.
I'd like to know why.
Well, that is going to be something you're going to have the council look at?
Yep.
Okay.
Article Nine is the snow removal for overtime.
Do you have dollar amounts for any of these articles?
Yes, I do, in our budget book. Typically, this is how it's presented on the warrant. And then it goes into detail within the budget book on the actual dollar amounts.
No, not that I'm used to. Typically, a town meeting, they say, ask the town to raise appropriate transfer a specific dollar amount from these accounts.
I disagree with you. Having, again, the person who's made amendments or introduced articles on the town meeting floor, generally what happens is they, you're handed from the town clerk, this is raise and appropriate. And then you say, is to raise and appropriate, and you have a number. And she says, is this number correct? And then that number is only on that thing when you present it to the town. Seldom, seldom, do you see a number actually in the language of the warrant when it's posted like this. Seldom. I mean, there are some things that are in here regarding, but there's no requirement to do that.
Typically, we have numbers in there. Lots of these things, but...
In the budget book, there will be numbers.
Right, the budget book will have vastly more detail. I mean, well, you know, that book will probably be 25, 30 pages long. And it has all of the details regarding what the actual dollar amount is for everything.
So you see some of them under capital, you see some of them have specific dollar amounts, but many of them don't.
Article 10 is the snow removal expense account. And then here, that's kind of the top 10 recurring articles that we have every year. So I just copied and pasted those from prior years. And then Articles 11 on, we get into some unusual, or, you know, not typical, but not unheard of articles. So we get into Article 11, which these next couple of articles were an effort put forth by the Finance Committee. They've been diligently working on helping us clean up some of our books. And the chair has noticed that we have a number of articles on our books that haven't been expended, and they've been sitting on the books in some cases more than 20 years. And at that point, the reason why this is actually harmful to the town is because those dollar figures just sit in an account and they don't get any interest. So we actually lose value on the dollar the longer that these sit in these accounts.
So do we have explanation for each of these articles, what they were for, and why they're not used? Are they not needed? Is there a reason? Got to be a reason that we're voting for it.
My guess, my guess, the, from what I had an opportunity to meet with Dan, some of these things have been since 2000, 2003, and they were just unexpended things that were left over from work on a bridge or whatever.
That's it, that's what we'll make sure.
And they've just sat there for a decade or more. And so he would like to clean some of that stuff up. And thus, that is why you see these articles, to amend previous votes of the town in order to clean the money up and to move it back into the general fund.
Well, those first ones saying rescind the vote from Article 12, that would rescind all of the money. So it can't be a leftover portion. If there's a leftover portion, we need a motion to move the remaining portion back into that general fund, not rescind. We need to make sure with these votes to do them before we, if we rescind it, then the payment's already been made, then that just really messes up books.
So what we want to do is find out from Budget and Finance the exact number of that.
Right.
What the number is for, and is it not rescinding, is if it's...
The remaining portion.
If we transfer the remaining portion, it's fine. But to rescind that vote is a whole different thing, so...
Okay, well, I'll double check on this language too, because this is language that was used in prior years to clean up the similar type of articles. So I'll just make sure that we are, you know, going forward, that we will be using the correct language.
Do we know offhand if these are majority vote or two-thirds?
Majority, they should be majority.
Town council will be reviewing this before we sign it, it's later this week.
Yeah, but don't be two-thirds until we're taking out of stabilization account, savings, or we do have bylaws and things like that sometimes.
And so, so we're dealing with a similar issue in Articles 12, 13, and 14. One was from 2003, 2004, both articles that dealt with repair to bridges. And one of them came from the town meeting last year for the town hall roof that came in under budget. So we have leftover funds there.
I think Greg makes a good point, especially when we look at 2021, because we know this is a remainder. It is not...
For these things to be handed to us as these requests, right before a town meeting, I'm uncomfortable with it. I typically say we should have seen this long before, and we could hold them even till special town meeting and move it later. So if we don't get satisfactory answers, we don't have to put any of these on the warrant. And I wouldn't if I'm not comfortable with them. Right now, I'm not, but that's one selectman's opinion.
Yeah, I think we can have the town council take a look at those and...
And if they've been sitting for 10 to 20 years, they can sit till special town meeting if need be, give the explanation.
Agree, agree.
But we need to find out. I don't like when they're given surprises. I don't like that we haven't seen any articles presented to us before tonight. So we've had no idea what's here to review any of them and decide. Because we still have to decide what we actually want to put on this warrant. Because it's not a given to be in the warrant because somebody asked for it unless they have signatures. Please continue.
All right. Article 15 is payment of a bill from a prior fiscal year. So we just, we missed a health insurance bill last year, so we just need to take care of that. That will have to come out of the landfill stabilization account, which will require the two-thirds vote since we do not have free cash to take it from. The Article 16 is from the fire chief, as well as Articles 17 and 18. The fire chief is requesting a new ambulance, and we got updated numbers. I got an updated number today of 305 instead of 365.
Is this a purchase that was recommended by the Budget and Finance Committee?
Yes.
We knew this was coming. We thought they were going to try to do it last year, go back to back years, and he held off a year.
Yes, and by holding off a year, we're actually holding off two years because
It's a year to get it, yeah.
There's a two-year build time right now. And the same issue is with this, oh, that should say, purchase and equip a new fire truck on Article 17. We have another two-year build time, and this fire truck was supposed to be replaced, I believe, at the last town meeting, if not the town meeting prior to that.
Which fire truck are they replacing?
It's the oldest fire truck in the fleet. I believe that's Engine Five, from the 1980s.
80s or 70s, Engine Five, what do you think, Dennis?
80s.
Is it 80s? Must have been one that was the 70s.
So again, what's important to recognize about the ambulance and the fire truck is that they do have a two-year build time. So there will be no financial commitment from the town until they come in, which means that at this town meeting, we are not appropriating any funds. We're basically just giving the fire chief permission to go forward with the purchase. And at two town meetings from now, that's when we will have to allocate the funds for it. And that gives us a couple of years to save up, build up our capital stabilization account, and then enter into, you know, a lease-to-purchase agreement, which will spread those payments out a period of seven years for the fire truck. And then the ambulance can be recommended three years since it only has a five-year lifespan, five to six-year lifespan.
The vote reads to raise appropriate transfer. So it doesn't say give permission to pursue it. It says that we're going to have to hold those funds aside in some way for this. Doesn't mean we have to spend them, but it means we have to earmark it from some account, $700,000 for that truck, or something.
No, not necessarily, because every...
Or borrow is in there, isn't it?
Yes, borrow is in there.
Borrow, right.
So if we approve the borrowing, it doesn't have to be done today?
Correct, and that's going to be the...
I'm just making sure we don't put ourselves on it.
Yeah, no. And that's going to be the recommended source of financing is borrowing.
We plan to dead exclude these articles, or that will come when we actually go to borrow?
Nope, so the company that we buy these apparatus, these pieces of apparatus from, they do like a lease purchase agreement.
Oh, okay.
So basically, every year in the budget, say, it costs, you know, $100,000 for an annual payment on the fire truck. Then every year when we go to town meeting, we'd have to approve $100,000 to go towards that fire truck payment for that year. And then the third request from the fire chief is a HVAC replacement at Station Two. They've had issues. The current HVAC system broke, and luckily, there's a staff member of the fire department who is proficient in HVAC, you know, working on HVAC. And he was able to get it working throughout, you know, the winter when they needed it. But it was kind of a very temporary fix, and so now they need more of a permanent fix to get the station through the next, you know, several winters.
Wasn't that just put in a couple of years ago?
I don't believe so. I know that they've been doing a number of replacements to the building itself.
They did a lot of renovations, Dan, I thought that he was one of them.
Yes, but to my knowledge, the HVAC was not one of those, at least anytime recently. Article 19, I have suggested that we move Ruggles Lane parking lot from the ARPA funds to come out of the landfill stabilization account to give us more flexibility over the use of ARPA, because this project is now not going to be done until the new fiscal year. So kind of using that, using ARPA funds to fund this project was kind of a Band-Aid because, to avoid going to the special town meeting. So now that we have the time...
Right, I have no problem leaving that on the warrant, and then the town can decide which they want to pay for it. It's already approved out of ARPA, and if they...
Well, technically, the selectmen are authorized to decide how to spend ARPA money, so the town meeting wouldn't really have any say in it.
Well, no, we're given the opportunity in this case to say, instead of using the ARPA funds for that, we can pay for it a different manner and hold those ARPA funds back. And that's what I'm saying, it's good to give the town the choice.
Right.
We approved it because we had to, to proceed with the paving, like we've been trying to do for two years.
We thought it was going to be done in April, but it didn't happen, so. Hopefully, July 18th, I hear.
So yeah, that'll give the town some say, which is, it's nice when we can give it a say. The same reason that John wanted to hold off the sample oven project, so it gives us a chance to put it through the town before we spend our...
Our next article, and the next couple of articles, we return back to the perfunctory articles that we see every year. So we have the Chapter 90 grant, which gives the town the permission to borrow the funds needed to fund the Chapter 90 projects that we end up getting reimbursement for. And then we have Article 21, giving the treasurer collector permission to borrow with the approval of the select board. Again, something that goes on every warrant. Article 22, choose town officers. This is another similar article that we see every year. Article 23, reports from committees. This is the reports that are presented to the town through the annual town report. And then the remainder of the articles are all actually citizen petitions. So regardless, the, you know, these folks got the signatures that they needed. They were certified by the town clerk, and they have to go on the agenda as presented.
Okay, so which ones are that, Articles 25?
Those are Articles 25, 26, 27, 28, and 29.
And 30.
And 30, yeah, 30 is a...
30, you don't need to cover those.
24 through 30.
So we have no say on those anyways, so we don't need to cover those.
Right.
They'll be posted with the meetings. All right, so my concerns with the warrant, of course, are going to be, you know, all these recommendations for the finance for cleaning up. You know, if we're not dead sure, not absolutely sure what they're doing, there's no harm to put them off another six months, have a special town and clean them up then.
I agree.
I don't like when things come in just last minute.
Well, they've been having a conversation about this, I understand, over the course of the deliberations on the budget, correct?
They brought these up at the last town meeting.
But when they want the select board to bring it up, to post it on the warrant, and they want us to post something, it's just like going back to the Sewer Commission asking for their borrowing permission. Give us a clue what we're asking for before you ask us to put in the warrant, because we have to support this in the warrant. It's not, you know, the Finance Committee could have got 10 signatures and placed these on the warrant. Very easy to get them. But they're asking us to place them on, so I just want to know what they are for sure before we do it.
So you'll have Dan give us some specifics on these, whether we, and I, and I don't think it is appropriate that we rescind them all if we should be doing something else with them.
Right, I think the only challenge with holding off to a town meeting is that we can't, so these funds end up coming back to us through free cash. So if we do this now, we could have access to them at an earlier period of time to invest elsewhere.
I see what you're saying.
So we just find...
Well, we can leave them on there, and they can be tabled at town meeting if we're not satisfactory with them. We can do it then too, just if you get the explanation from them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll leave them all intact as is, except for the explanation through town.
Yeah, and I think that if it's unexpended funds, that should be noted.
Right.
Yeah, that we're returning unexpended funds.
Yeah, rather than rescinding the vote so that the project was never done.
Right, unexpended funds, we return to the general fund, and they'll just be held over for free cash. And if it's a project, for example, like we had the roof repair on the senior center, that they want to getting a grant to cover that repair so they never expended the funds, we had to transfer that back in as well.
Right.
But that was done in a reasonable time manner, within a year.
Right, I think...
I don't know why they sit so long.
Right. I think one of the challenges is that understanding why these articles have sat for so long is going to be difficult, because it's not something as recent as when they have the town, the senior center roof on there. We're talking articles from 2002, before any of us...
But I'm sure there's records that Ellen can pull up very readily. If you say, can I have the town meeting warrant from 2002?
Right, which we have.
And it may be digitized.
Yes, yeah, no, we have all of that.
It may well be digitized by now, which means it'd be very easy to click and point and know what they're from.
Yes.
And know if it's unexpended or if the project was never even attempted.
Right, if there's $100,000 allowed in this $25,000 left, then we probably just have unexpended funds, and then we transfer those.
That's, I think, what Dan has indicated, they're unexpended funds.
If there's $25,000, $25,000 left, then maybe it was done with something else.
We may have to reword that, but if you can talk with Dan about that, and also talk with Sarah about that. Make sure we have the Department of Revenue on our team.
As many as we can clean up, we'll clean up. And if there's ones we can, I would rather wait than make it air. It's going to have to be cleaned up again in a more difficult manner.
Great, okay. So pending the modifications as requested, and the attorney's review, we would be in to sign this before, when do you need us to sign this for sure?
And you have the language change for the fire truck instead of ambulance twice. You've noted that, correct?
Yes. Yes, I can, it will definitely be done by, done and printed by Thursday.
Okay, so you need three signatures on Thursday, okay.
I'll list two, three would be nice.
Oh, I thought you needed three on the warrant.
And this has to be posted by next Tuesday?
Yes.
At the latest?
Right.
So it doesn't give us a lot of time if something's not right. We've got to make sure it's ranked right.
Well, and if there's recommendations by the attorney that the board should know about, can you just make sure that you provide us with that information?
Yes.
You know, the other options, we could have a meeting Thursday night and just meet as a board. So if there are attorney changes or recommended things, we can discuss it and approve it, because we can't approve them individually, so maybe we plan on...
At least post a meeting and agree that we...
Yeah.
Right, if it's just coming in sign for what we did, we're fine. But if there's something else we have to agree to, then we'd have to post a meeting.
Yeah, we've got the 48, so, 48 hours.
Not equipped for a meeting, so...
Thursday night?
Agreed.
6:30 or 6:00? Can you make it at 6:00?
Yeah, I can make it.
6:00, okay, 6:00?
Okay, I'll post it.
Yeah, I can make it.
It's up to you, if it's not comfortable.
6:30 is better.
6:30, okay, 6:30.
That's all.
It's a safer option.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, I mean, we don't want to stress and not make...
Okay, moving on...
You don't want to walk in and work those.
Okay, are we set with warrant? We set with warrant, everybody?
Yes.
Okay.
I make a motion, we accept the warrant as it's written, pending the changes.
And a review by council.
And we'll sign it Thursday if we can, otherwise, we'll meet Thursday.
Right, all right.
The only other... Okay, go ahead.
Okay, your motion is...
Do you second it for the discussion?
Yes.
You can have a discussion after you...
The only other thing that I had discussed with Ellen about having a special town meeting instead of the annual, or instead of putting the article on the annual town meeting, is she did check with DOR, and we can have that combi oven on the annual town meeting warrant, so...
We can, because it's a fiscal year still.
Actually, it would have to be indicated as the prior fiscal year.
Right, but it's a lot of the same...
But it can be on the same warrant, so...
I assume that we wouldn't have to do a special meeting for it. But you have a separate warrant done for that as well, or not? Because we need to approve that tonight too, and post it.
Nope, so she recommended, just because she would have to go through two separate voting lists and everything, she recommended that the board just put it all on the annual town meeting instead of special.
Well, in that case, I rescind my motion to approve this warrant. Can I do that? Can I take my motion back?
Sure, you certainly can.
I would make a motion that we open the special town meeting warrant.
A second?
Wait a minute.
We need to get rid of the special town meeting warrant.
Oh, yes. Well, did you want to do that?
Yep, I just...
Pre?
Doesn't matter.
Pre this vote?
Sure, it doesn't matter.
That you've just made, okay, so you want to, now we're not dealing with this warrant, we're going back to...
We have a motion and a second to rescind, to open the special town meeting warrant.
Second? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
I make a motion, we remove the only article from special town meeting warrant.
Second?
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion, we dissolve the special town meeting prior to town meeting.
Second?
Vote?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Now I make a motion, we open the town meeting warrant.
Second?
We had a motion made in second, and any further discussion on the final opening of this final warrant? We good? Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion, we add Article 31 to the, to our town meeting warrant for June 16th. To either be raise appropriate transfer funds, or should we just, before we say, do we want to stick with take from capital purchase stabilization?
You can say, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow or transfer from available funds the sum of $6,059 to pay for bills of a prior fiscal year, or take any other action relative there to...
Jessica very clearly stated my motion.
We have a second? We do?
Second?
Those in favor? Aye?
Aye. Make a motion, we close the town meeting warrant.
Second?
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're good?
Now I'll make a motion that we approve the town meeting warrant.
Second?
Pending, no, hold on, pending the changes we've discussed. And we would sign said warrant Thursday, unless changes are needed, at which point we will have another meeting Thursday.
Good? Okay, you also, wait, would we accept a friendly amendment to ensure that the legal counsel has reviewed it as well?
That's all right, that's going to happen already. We've already decided that's happening, so I'm...
You're thinking it's really going to happen, okay.
If it's not, then we won't fly. We've got to come.
That'll make one another meeting necessary, but let's go. Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, well, good.
Okay. Now we come before you.
Wasn't that easy? So you made seven motions.
We made a lot. We opened special, we opened special town, removed...
She's ready to go.
Closed, rescinded special town, opened town, added it, closed it, then we approved it.
Okay, moving on to personnel. We have an item, Item I, I believe, or the first item, we are moving, passing over that?
Yeah, take no action.
Take no action at this time? As I believe there's still some negotiation issues that are ongoing. 9/11 committee appointment vote. We have, I think, members of the 9/11 committee here, so if you have a presentation on the people you would like to have appointed to the committee?
This is Mike Leonard and Mike Wood, who've shown interest in being on the committee. We've lost a few members over our timeframe and had a void. They're willing to step up, Mike Mason, and also a United States veteran. The other Mike, two Mikes. He is retired.
Truck driver.
Truck driver.
Retired.
And he's shown an interest in it as well. He's been to one of our meetings already, and I think they'd be a good fit.
Okay, thank you, Dennis. Do you have any comments or questions that you, either Mike or Mike would have?
No, Dennis has brought, well, for me, Dennis has brought this up just for me, so...
Okay.
And we have open positions officially?
No, they came to me, I didn't know that there were any openings on the board, so they came to me with the appointments.
What kind of terms do we have to vacate a seat officially first? That's what I want to make sure. If we still have these people in the seat, and they've resigned or they're not coming, we have to remove them.
I don't know if, do you have some official resignations?
I don't. That would have gone to Ellen. We lost Colleen Burton, Brenda Rich, another gentleman named Wood, Joe Wood. These three right there, and they have...
Okay, so they've resigned through the town clerk?
I believe so.
They may have either resigned or been non-responsive to previous requests for their reappointment.
Do you know, do we put term limits on that committee?
No. You have to get re, you have to get re sworn every year, I believe.
So they're reappointed annually, then?
Right. And then there's no limit, until the project is completed.
And we've made no, we've accepted no resignations to my memory this year.
No, we haven't accepted any resignations, but did we have the, did we have it at capacity? Did we, sometimes we limit committees, we'll give nine, or seven, or 11.
We have a number, and we've been without these people for...
Yeah, but you see what I mean, I got to, if, if, if we put them in a seat that doesn't exist, it doesn't...
Can't remember, oh, it was...
I mean, you're supposed to have five, 10, oh, 10.
Yeah.
That's a large committee.
Do you mind if we put it off to our next meeting, the first meeting?
Which is June 6?
And just let us make sure, because if we need to remove people from the seat, we'll just remove people first.
Well, they're removed on the website.
But not through us, but not through us resignation from the board, we haven't accepted any resignation.
Who maintains that website? Is that the town clerk?
Well, it's the town's website. Um, myself and Tony Msnick, your chair and vice chair, so I've been putting the meetings on and the agenda.
Okay.
Lester was our, and that's another one, Lester.
Our clerk.
We know, we know Lester's not here.
And we, we lost all of the minutes that he kept.
Oh.
So I've been keeping minutes and turning them into the town clerk since Lester passed.
Well, I, I would suggest tonight we just answer any questions you have, and I mean, I certainly have no problem appointing them, but I just want to make sure we have the seats open and do it properly so it doesn't make trouble there.
It looks like you may need more than the two you have here as well, so...
Yeah, there's more, really.
Right.
So if, if we'll check with the town clerk, Dennis, and if you could provide that information for Jessica, and we'll deal with it on the 6th, I think it's the 6th of June, is it?
Correct.
You guys don't have to come back or anything like that.
Well, I was just gonna say...
No need to, no need to be here.
Yes, well, yes.
Appoint them knowing that.
Yeah, we'll make, we'll make sure.
We'll accept the resignations of those who are no longer participating and then we'll, you know, include these gentlemen.
And then we can appoint them.
Well, I never, I think that's his place. I didn't know that, um, they didn't turn any...
Well, they may have.
Well, the other way we could go is we could, we could, um...
Well, I didn't imagine we had that.
We could increase the number of seats on the committee by two and add these to the position, then rescind the number of seats later and just do it now, but I mean, it's kinda silly to, just to do it to put them on and just to pull the seats back later.
Well, I don't, I don't think it'll be problematic to wait to June 6, and I don't think these gentlemen have to return.
Well, actually, that's the night we're gonna meet.
Yeah, we'll be up to...
We'll be here anyway.
Okay.
5:30, so...
Okay.
And we'll come here for...
Yeah, we should be, well, we're 6:30.
We don't usually start our meetings until 6:30.
But we can address that, we can address that first anyways.
That would be fine.
Well, I got something I'd like to show you.
I was gonna ask, how we doing on the, um...
Well, I know you want to keep the meeting brief, but we've been chugging along since, you know, COVID lifted and now it's kinda buried in the top of your head again, but we've been having in-person meetings and we've been pushing along. Um, one of the things we did was contacted the same paper company that did the bricks at the front of the library.
Oh, yes, uh-huh.
This is a little heavy, so I don't know if you want to pass around, I can just put it back.
Yeah, you can see it right there.
Oh, great.
You can see it. Um, that's one of the designs, just, just something that was written up. People are gonna be able to put loved ones' names on it. There's, there's a website this company gives you, if you do business with them, you can set parameters, so you couldn't have a Mickey Mouse logo on it.
Right.
There's only a certain few logos, like all of the services and the 9/11 logo that you could choose from, and, you know, they would also, for approval, you know, make sure nobody put anything inappropriate or anything like that, but anybody could buy a brick for that to help fund it.
It's a great fundraiser.
Yes.
Library made a lot of money.
All that money goes to them, we don't have to deal with it.
Right.
They cut a check to the town.
Looks like this depth, is that engraved and painted or just painted? Is it depth to those?
I, no, it's stamped.
It is that shaped, because it looks like it has depth to it, so that's...
Mike, who's a Mason, said that's a good quality.
That's, they're very clean lines in there.
Yeah, and actually, it says remember on it too in small print, which is kinda neat.
I see that, yeah.
We would, we've been working on a change of location of where the actual monument's gonna be, because of the wetness of the common over there, it's gonna be between the extension road where you go up to the brown fountain, you go around the brown fountain, and then the sidewalk would continue to the other sidewalk, and that would go in the, in between them and keeping it out of the wet area on the other side, which makes sense.
How, how tall's a monument gonna be when it's, when it's done?
Seven feet?
It's a six.
With the antenna on it?
Wow, that's...
All right, so not too, I was gonna say, we could always put a good footing if we had to, but it's not gonna be that large, so it's, it's...
I've gotta meet with Jason to discuss exactly what the DPW's rule is gonna be in it, to, so once that's satisfied, we have to outsource to somebody, you know, we've got some good people here that, you know, have a lot of expertise in that stuff.
We could dig below the frost line and pour a chunk of concrete that's not gonna move, ever, and go from there.
And the pieces of granite we got from the Barry wool, these were the sills, the granite sills for the big windows. We got several of those, Jason went down and got them from the Barry wool who donated them to us. They had them all sold to some company, but they gave us a bunch of them, and we picked out two that are, you know, pretty good shape, because they're pretty brittle, you can handle on them, you know, they can't break.
The gra, granite?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And those will stand up and they'll be pegged and, you know, these guys have that expertise on how, kinda similar to what we did with the Barry common, with the posts around it, the granite pillars, some of them, when they were trying to pull them up to bring them up to height again, just snapped and happened. They drill them, peg them, and epoxy them, and you're never gonna get those things apart. So this is gonna be, the pillars will be pegged and epoxy to a granite platform, and then it'll have like a cement base and gravel base, whatever, whoever would design that, I guess for weight, is to be what size of a footing you would have on it, so it wouldn't, you know, sink. It's not, it's not gonna have nearly the weight of some of the other monuments.
Well, the, yeah, the footing thickness covers the weight, but the depth is gonna get us below the frost line to make sure it doesn't heave, and that's the, if it is damp, it's very likely to heave, so it might be worth going down below the frost line to make sure it's not gonna heave on us. Um, and yeah, I'm sure the depth will be, I don't know, maybe eight or 10 inches, I wouldn't have taken much more, but could be. I mean, you said 10-inch thickness is pretty good.
Depending on how big of a ground.
Well, it's interesting.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's still very strong, I'm saying.
So...
So are you expecting this is going to be a, uh, bricks actually around the monument?
Mm-hmm.
And, and how many, how many bricks would you have for sale and so forth?
Well, it depends on, that's something we're still working on. It gets to a point where we would say, okay, after 300 or 400 bricks, 200 bricks get sold, then we would start to do it, and as it continued, people will buy them, kinda like what they did at the library.
So these are pavers, this is gonna make a whole...
You take out the other one and put the other one back in, you know, so that, that will be an ongoing thing.
Okay, oh, okay.
Yeah, so there will be no limit to that.
Oh.
I mean, because there would be a lot of open spots.
Yeah.
There's a lot of open spots at the library one.
Yes, yes.
And then once in a while, somebody will do it, and then that comes in.
But one thing, I think we had the same company at the library.
It is the exact same.
Yeah, and I, and I would just say, if you take a look at the, although that's not a sidewalk so much that it would be shovel during the winter, but because of our using salt and stuff, you can see that it's a kind of...
I think this is a more new and improved...
It could be.
...brick too.
Yeah.
But we, Lester's the one that gave us the name of that, because he, he actually was gonna be the one dealing with them.
You'd hope they don't salt them.
They can seal it.
He could, yeah, put some, put some valve spore on it.
It's gotta be like five years of salt, you seal it, it'll increase.
But still, if they use a non-sodium ice melt, it should wreck them.
On your agenda till the donation.
Yeah, seal them.
Of this, right?
Well, we're just, yeah.
We're, we're right in line.
Right next to it.
Okay.
Yeah. So we will take care of those appointments on the 6th, and since you'll be meeting the same night, we will sort of get together where, as you can come up or down the stairs?
Sure.
Okay? I think while you're here, we can move right to donations and take a look at the 9/11 memorial committee. You have some information for us there?
I don't physically have the check, you guys.
We've already taken care of the check because we want, we didn't want to hold on to that cash, but you can talk about where the donation came from and...
Okay. Um, it's the second sizable donation we've gotten, we did get, to start us off, $5,000 from the Barry Foundation, which was a nice country check.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there was an article I'd seen about an organization in New York called Tunnel to Towers, uh, which is a pretty big organization, and I had written them a letter saying, you know, we're, what we're doing on our common. Basically, they help people with handicapped housing, paying off people's mortgages that were, you know, people who got sick from being at Ground Zero, people who lost loved ones, all those, and a gentleman who lost a family member started this last time, is still, and it's an amazing organization. They don't normally fund memorials, they tend to help people. But I wrote in the letter anyway, said, you know, you're in line with us, this is what we've been working on for quite a while. They said, we're gonna make an exception and here's $5,000 to help you.
Wow, great. Congratulations.
Yeah, the answer's no if you don't ask.
Absolutely.
So they sent the check and Jessica has that, and, um, they actually sent a handwritten note to us, um, saying they've brought those lives that, you know, you don't forget, because it's very personal with those people, because of how many they lost in New York.
Well, certainly on behalf of the board, I, we, we thank you for the work that you're willing to do on this project, and it wouldn't happen if people like you didn't, you know, step up and say it's, it's worth the time, it's worth the effort, and it's worth the funding. So thank you so much for, for agreeing to do that, and we'll get this information of your, you know, the membership or your team straightened out on June 6th, and it looks like you could probably solicit some help from others, because I think you've got some extra spots if you, if the number of individuals...
Yeah, if you're in Maria.
Yeah, so, but thank you very much for that.
All right, well, thank you.
We'll see you on June 6th.
Who's that?
I think we have one more, um, de, uh...
You want me to leave this here?
I think donation.
If you want, we can face the cameras with it, right there, and I'll get me able to zoom in from up in the, thanks. If you can see it, make it...
Stick it on the finger up there.
Thanks so much.
We'll do that, we're done. I think I can see that right.
Um, we have another, I think, donation to the Felton Field Commission from the Barry Fair Commission and, our committee, and I see that the Felton Field, a couple commissioners are here to, I guess, accept, at least in, without, we don't have a big check or anything.
Yeah, unfortunately, there's no big photo op check, I'm sorry.
But I, but I know that the Barry Fair Committee, you probably know more about the Barry Fair Committee than most people because you have been participants of the Barry Fair Committee in the past, and it looks as if they're not moving forward with their committee work anymore for a Barry Fair, so that they have generously indicated that they would take their current amount of money that they have in their coffers to, and, and give it and allocate it to the Felton Field Commission solely for the purposes of maintaining that very large white building called the Patisi Building, and I believe that Joe Patisi probably was one of the people who, I don't know, made the Barry Fair Committee work for 50 years probably.
Yes.
So I don't know if you have comments about that, or, I know you've met with the auditor and you know how we're gonna move this money and all.
Yeah, yeah, so I've talked with the accountant, um, and, you know, we, we went through and made sure that we had, you know, the place made a special account for this money, and it is super, super exciting, because I know that we've talked very recently about some repairs that the Patisi Building needs, um, so I know that this is a large sum of money, I'm available to help you guys navigate how to invest it, I know you, you know, you were talking about window replacements that the building needs, so, you know, at any point, if you guys wanna come and have a meeting and we can talk about how to invest, you know, get the most out of those dollars, I'd be happy to, to discuss, and if you guys have anything else you want to say?
Thank you, good enough.
You had it spent yesterday?
No, no.
Yeah, I know.
So we certainly will be able to, you know, we'll use our plywood, yeah, we'd like, yeah, we'd like to replace the plywood windows that are there now.
Yeah.
You know, and, uh, yeah, we're excited, you know, it'll look pretty awesome.
Uh, do you have, do you know who the representatives are of the Barry Fair that they can, if they choose to, you know...
Yes, yes.
Meet with or talk with?
I have the letter up in my office, I know Janine Pimental was one of the members, and then there was another elderly gentleman who...
Nina Hines?
Yes, yes, that's who it is. I would say the name...
I don't think we should introduce him as an elderly gentleman, but...
He'll appreciate me.
When you're 20-something.
Yeah, I know.
Or all elderly.
I know, huh?
No, that's awesome.
You know.
Thank you for coming, appreciate you taking the time.
I'm one of the deputies.
I don't think we have any other, unless, John, you have anything other on, for new business?
No.
You think, okay. Moving forward into old business, it looks like that is pretty clean deck, and the only thing that I have is to go into executive session very briefly, just to, uh, just, just have a very brief conversation about some negotiations that we've been working on.
Okay, I did see you skipped public comment period.
Oh, no, I didn't skip it, no one was here to have a public comment, I did acknowledge it.
She did call part, oh, okay, I didn't, I didn't notice.
I did acknowledge it.
Just making sure.
Oh, drag, you're so good to pick that up.
I'm just making sure, I didn't, somehow I missed that.
No.
I thought, I thought everyone was...
Okay, so I, I think we're prepared to go into executive session solely for the purposes of just about five minutes, I would suspect, and then to come out solely for the purposes of adjourning.
Is that a motion or are you looking for one?
I'm looking for one.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sam.
Good night.
Good night.
I move that we move to executive session, Mass General Law, Chapter 30, Section 21A, to conduct strategy negotiations for the police chief.
Second?
Uh, those, all those in favor? Please roll call.
Dixon, yes.
Sullivan, yes.
Marshall, yes.